Yeah, most of the time.
Becky, are you ready?
Yep.
It is 9:00 AM. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted at the entrance of the room for anybody to review. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business this morning is prayer, and I will need that, so if you so choose, please bow your heads and join me. Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, with thanksgiving optimism in our hearts, Lord. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon Lincoln County, the people that live in this region, and the work that is being done by Lincoln County on behalf of our constituents. Lord, we ask that you just guide this meeting today. Give us a touch of your wisdom, of your discernment, of your temperance, and your understanding as we deliberate the important actions that are on our agenda. Lord, guide us to make the right decisions that are in the best interests of the people that we serve. Heavenly Father, we ask for your continued blessings, your protection over the people of this county, our first responders, our law enforcement personnel, and the military personnel that serve us here locally as well as those serving abroad, to protect the many freedoms that you give us. Heavenly Father, we pray all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting that was held on June 20, 2022. Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes regarding the Board of Commissioner meeting that was held June 20, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye. Next order of business is the claims and treasurers receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second. Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems.
I would like to point out that there was a capital outlay of $84,757.50 for the road department to Winston Michael Contracting. The concrete base for the salt shed, forms were up Monday, and I was told that the concrete was poured on Tuesday, so the first half of that project has been completed.
Perfect. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye. Next order of business is to receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff for the amount of $1,508.22.
Second.
Motion by Woller, second by Hughley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woller.
Aye.
Hughley.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye. Next order of business is authorize the chairman to sign a special designated liquor permit submitted by La Casa Del Rios for reception at Harbor Lights on July 16, 2022.
They have a catering license, and they've had some before in the past, so they did not need to appear.
Your feedback from the sheriff, any?
I sent him an email, but I'm not.
You're enterprise of it.
Yeah.
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we authorize you to sign a special designated liquor permit submitted by La Casa Del Rio for a reception at Harbor Lights on July 16, 2022. Their check for $40 is included.
Motion by Hughley. Second. Second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Woodruff. Brunz.
Aye.
That's pretty damn good, isn't it?
What happened?
Make sure this wasn't going over to jail. It says pocket file.
They get down with those Johnson controls?
No. It is a work in progress. He is there working as we speak, and the bid is what the bid is. It's not going to come in less or more. He went ahead and filed it so we could get it signed off today, but they are there working.
I don't know. We had one, one, one time that.
I know, okay, there's a issue.
Yeah.
That I'm not sure about.
Got you.
But, yeah, I think we did.
Got you.
Dr. Scruggs.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah. Oh, they have moved to South Cottonwood. I did not know that.
They moved up Squarewood, I thought.
Yeah, Cottonwood Square.
It is 9:15. We will now recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance to the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting that was held on June 20, 2022. Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting that was held June 20, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye. Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Looks like we have a couple of those today. Julie?
Yes, we do. Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. And both of these are 2019 homestead exemption applications where the state is doing auditing the income right now on those, and they have apparently more income on both of these here, so they went from, one went from 100% to 30%, and one went from 100% to 60%, so they are losing a little bit of the homestead exemption that they originally thought they had.
Looks like one went, yeah, 100 to 30, 100 to 60. Okay. Any questions by anybody for Julie? No, I was waving to Todd, sorry. Greeting Todd. Good morning, Todd. Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure? Chairman, I would move to approve the certificates of correction and refund submitted by the county assessor.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Woller.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Good morning, Todd.
Morning. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Okay.
We're glad you're with us.
You're looking good.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Next order of business is motor vehicle tax exemption applications submitted by the county treasurer. We have a deputy with us today and a slew of applications, copies of which were in everybody's packets to review.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready?
I am.
I'd make a motion that we approve the application exemption for the Community Action Partnership of Mid-Nebraska for a 2019 Dodge Caravan, a 2002 Chevy Malibu, and a 2001 Chevy Impala used for educational purposes, and recommended for approval by the Lincoln County Treasurer's Office.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would also make a motion that we approve the application for exemption by the American Red Cross. It's for a 2018 Dodge minivan, actually two, three 2018 Dodge minivans, and a 2019 Dodge cargo van used for charitable purpose, recommended for approval by the Lincoln County Treasurer's Office.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, and you sign the application for exemption by the North Platte Opportunity Center for three vehicles, a 2010 Chevrolet Express Van, a 2021 Ford Bus, and a 2010 cutaway Ford Van. For charitable purposes, all of the Opportunity Center vehicles are used exclusively for the purpose of transportation of the adults with disability that are served by North Platte Opportunity Center, and it has been approved by Alex Cacculo.
You want me to sign that, or are you going to sign that?
I will sign it, I guess. Thank you.
Second. Motion by Woller, second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woller.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley. Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunz. Burns.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I make a motion that we approve the application for exemption from Riverside Baptist Church here in North Platte for a Toyota Highlander, two thousand four SUV, used for religious purposes. It's been approved by Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Gachulo. I would make a motion that we approve this application.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wuler. Any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Chairman, I have a motion, I would make a motion to approve the North Platte Catholic School exemption, uh, form four fifty-seven for a two thousand four Chevy Venture that's used to transport faculty and students to activities for the Platte Catholic Schools. And it has been approved by the county treasurer, Alex Gachulo.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Wuler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, an application for exemption from North Platte, Four Square Gospel Church here in North Platte, for a Sawyer Trailer, twenty twenty-two. This is used for religious purposes following worship electronics and equipment when hauling certain heavy services at another facility. This has been approved by Alex Gachulo, Lincoln County Treasurer. I would make a motion that we approve this application.
Second. Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Chairman, I have a, I would make a motion to approve the application for exemption, form fifty, four fifty-seven for Riverside Baptist Church here in North Platte. This is for a two thousand four SUV Highlander, I believe Toyota. Uh, used to visit, uh, church patrons and so forth. And it has been approved by the county treasurer, Alex Gachulo. So it would be my motion.
Motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Hughley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
I don't know, it is, they've duplicated this. Check the VIN number. Well, this is an eight four hundred and this is a six four hundred. I don't know if that's a typo or not, but. It does. Same vehicle, but the VIN number is different. Go down there.
I lost track. You take it from here, don't you, so. I just have to tell them, and you did.
Same model, same year. Where'd you go? That shows an eight, that shows a six, the VIN number. They could fill out too different ones, so. Came out of the factory right next to each other.
Must have.
Next order of business is property valuation changes submitted by the county assessor.
Morning, you can.
Good morning.
Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor. Um, this one here is on a vacant lot in Hershey that was gifted to the village of Hershey. So, um, obviously the cities are tax exempt, so we have to go in and put a tax exempt value, a zero value, on it, make it exempt. It had a twelve thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollar value on it before it was gifted. So this is just bringing that value back to zero, making it exempt.
Chairman, I would move to approve the property valuation change that's submitted by the county assessor regarding parcel seven eight one one zero point zero zero.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wuler.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye. Is there anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Hearing nothing. We will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization at nine twenty-seven and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Moving on to our nine twenty-five agenda item. Discuss and consider authorizing the J C's to work with the Lincoln County Ag Society to sell alcohol at a fair event on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two for the special designated liquor permit that was approved at the last meeting. I do believe we have a couple representatives with us that can speak to this, provide any clarification, or answer any questions.
I'm Amanda Carver with the Lincoln County Ag Society.
Katie McNeil was at the North Platte J C's.
Good morning.
Ladies.
Good morning. So basically what happened is the fair board is one liquor license short because you only get six a year for nonprofit. Um, so I contacted Katie to see if the J C's would let us use one, I guess, and then split the profits with them from the event on the twenty-first. Um, Katie and the J C's have a meeting tomorrow. So the Liquor Commission said to come here, get your approval. After their meeting, Katie and I called the Liquor Commission and she'll just change it in her system because it's already paid for. And she said I will just change it all over to the J C's.
Yeah, this happens from time to time. Liquor Commission had no qualms with it?
No, she said as long as you can find another nonprofit, my other option was to connect the two facilities, but, but I can't do that, so.
Right.
I said I can't really connect the pavilion and the raceway, ma'am, so I'm just going to have to go to the nonprofit. So she was fine with that, as long as you guys were fine with that, just call her back on Wednesday and she will change it in her system for us.
So wouldn't, wouldn't the motion, you know, be to prioritize the liquor permit to be under the name of the North Platte J C's?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Becky, is there anything administratively that we need to do?
No, we'll just have, I'll put it in the minutes.
Yeah, well, I tried to ask the lady at the Liquor Commission, like, do I need to bring something in? She's like, no, just go get approval. And I was like, okay, okay. So I guess if.
They'll, they know where to find me.
Right.
So you, the J C's have the same training and so forth?
Yes, we're certified, um, through the police department and we do other liquor sales throughout the year. So we've only used one, so like, we shouldn't have an issue with that.
Okay, thank you.
We are taking it, like, to our meeting, our chapter meeting is tomorrow, nine at seven. So in order for us to say yes or no, we have to have the whole entire group, which I don't see an issue with it, but we still have to vote on it. So we were just covering our first base first.
Got it.
Ready for motion?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we correct the liquor license from the Lincoln County Ag Society acted on, was it last week? To the name of the North Platte J C's, uh, license to be held for an event July twenty-one, twenty twenty-two at the Lincoln County Fairgrounds.
Correct.
And that, um, something else, I love that. Period, I guess.
Second.
Motion by Hughley, second by Wuler. Any further discussion on this? There's mud.
There's mud.
Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Wuler. Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a great day.
Thank you.
Moving on to our nine thirty agenda item. Discuss and consider renewal of a lease agreement with Gordon and Mary Peterson for the probation offices and reporting center located at one oh two East Third Street, suites two oh one, two oh three, and two oh four. Becky, I believe you have some comments on this.
Lonnie cannot be here today because of a family thing that came up. He had no objections to it. This is where we've been for several years, so I had included the old lease agreement so you could see what the differences were and rights, so. If he said if he needed him, he does have a, his office can get ahold of his cell phone.
Is that a reasonable rate of increase?
Yeah, very minor.
Very minor. Given the market.
It'd been worse.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually pretty. Pretty surprising. Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure on this?
I was just going to kind of let you sit about. I'm pondering it.
It's your prerogative.
Is he plan B anywhere close?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that you sign the renewal of a lease agreement with Gordon and Mary Peterson for the probation offices and reporting center located at one oh two East Third Street, suites two oh one, two oh three, two oh four.
Motion by Wuler, second by Hughley. Any further discussion? Was there any talk in your discussions with them as far as updates to the H VAC and everything else?
I just know they're in poor condition.
Yeah, they are in poor condition.
I was going to say, uh, we are, we're still in discussion. That's ever going to happen. This is when those talks were, just a little before now probably should be appropriate, I would think, so.
That's a great point, maybe, uh, could we possibly postpone this until we've had that discussion?
I think, I think the second we sign this, we lose some leverage.
Well, that's, that's Joe's point, I think.
So, um, that, they are in poor condition, we have employees over there.
Isn't it the property owner's responsibility to keep that up?
Per the agreement from what I read, yes.
But.
But if it's working even in, in poor condition, everything's relative.
I don't know, but it'd be a good talking point, a good point, yeah.
I think holding it off a week, in my personal opinion, would allow for discussion to be had. Tyler, you have.
When does the current lease end?
July one, June thirty.
Kind of right post to the.
So assuming you don't take action on it today, probably be considered a holdover tenant. I don't remember if there's an automatic renewal provision in that lease or not.
Mr. Chairman, since it's still in discussion purposes, I would like to see if it'd be possible if I call Mr. Peterson at this time since we're discussing it.
Yeah.
And ask a couple of questions, and also with regards to the timing on the lease, would that be appropriate?
I think that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Might as well get an answer while we can. I know he was holding this off because he wanted to be here and then his circumstances changed, so.
Morning.
Yeah. As Tyler points out, it's got us between a rock and a hard spot as far as timing.
Looks like we pay a four hundred dollar annual repair and they pay, they're supposed to pay the difference on H VAC maintenance and other.
So is it the H VAC works just not well? Or it doesn't?
Intermittently.
I was on.
And when, when going not well, is my understanding.
Kind of odd that they put that word up there.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Right.
I don't see a number on the letter for him. Oh, yeah, here's, there's one. Yes.
I believe you, you think. Yeah, we got your, uh, I'm on the agenda, but I think you have a thing. And I think that's due to the thirties, we have some questions we'd like to talk to you about. While I'm holding you that motion, or what I would like to find out here, and also, uh, we have a situation right here to talk to us, it's out of time because of family problems, so would it be okay if we, uh, change it for the, whatever, a week from the day or something, or something? At least, I mean. For right now. But, okay, so just, we just want to be able to meet with you prior to signing it. Okay, hold on just a second there. Now, you said that's fine, tell him a date and time, would we want to meet, or do we want to have a committee of two meetings tomorrow, if you're trying?
Probably building it grounds.
And time, guys, two. Um, Wednesday's out because of, uh, visitors, you know, tomorrow, possibly.
Tomorrow, would work for me.
Don't look me, I'm just going to call, so.
We're, we're looking at Jason.
Jason.
We have.
We can push that back.
Okay.
We could, we could put.
I was going to ask for that anyway, so.
Oh, okay, very good. That works.
Tomorrow morning, what time?
And where?
Uh, tomorrow morning, what works best for you, time, what's working?
I would do it over at that building.
Yes.
At the building.
Yeah.
9:30, you want to meet, uh, you...
At, at the building.
At the building, okay. Does that work with you? Okay, we'll see you there then. Thanks, Gordy. Okay, I'm done.
I would like to point out that in the letter that we received from the prob, the chief probation officer, he did recommend that we continue our lease with them.
But to Joe's point, this is the time to talk about...
Yep.
...the HVAC.
Maybe some of the things might not even be aware, you know, maybe not.
Okay, so we will table that for next week.
Do you need a motion?
No, we're just gonna table, and you guys will meet with him tomorrow at 9:30 over there. Hash out questions that we have, so. Moving on to our 9:40 agenda item. Discuss and consider a mini grant application to be submitted to the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety by the Sheriff's Office for National Speeding Prevention. It's Lieutenant Dan again.
Lieutenant Dan again.
Lieutenant Newton, how are you this morning?
I forgot why I was here. G R A N T.
The sheriff is right behind you.
I'm good, how are you doing?
This is your copy.
Okay.
I think we all have, hey, he brought copies also.
Where's yours?
Back again. This is a Nebraska Office of Highway Safety grant mini application for the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office to participate in the National Speeding Prevention High Visibility Enforcement Mobilization. That's a mouthful. That runs July 20 through August 14, 2022. And our activity would be to con, conduct saturation, saturation, I can't talk. Conduct saturation patrols on major highways in Lincoln County during the peak traffic hours. And the request is 25,000. Yeah.
We're live streamed too, so everybody's watching.
About good health. Wow.
Would you like to repeat that moniker again? National Speeding Prevention, High Visibility Enforcement.
National Speeding Prevention, High Visibility Enforcement Mobilization. And saturation patrols. I should have practiced that before I come in here. And we, uh... Out of that 25,000, we just do a blanket overtime rate of 40 bucks an hour. Guys like me, when we work it, we lose a little bit, but the deputies make a little more, so it all comes out good.
This is something you've historically done, right?
We participate in a lot of their grants. We just, Sunday at midnight, completed the grant that we write specifically to cover Nebraska line days, and it saves our bacon. Friday, we, we had a ton of calls, starting at 7:00 in the morning when I come on, and our grant guys fill in, help out, work accidents. We had two rollovers opposite ends of the county, almost simultaneously Friday. And we had grant guys working them.
Where are these folks attracted to those dates?
That's just what the state puts out. We don't get to pick the dates on them, they just put out. That's even after, after the 4th of July and before Labor Day.
Yeah, that is kind of an odd timeline.
They must base that on statistics of accidents and such. Historic.
Well, I know that when you have these, deputies jump on it to earn that extra pay and typically have good results out of it, so.
Well, since we've gone to 9:45, and because I know our sheriff's department does a wonderful job, and especially getting these grants and using them. Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I'd make a motion that we authorize the, uh, grant application submitted to the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety by the Sheriff's Office for National Speeding Prevention in the amount of 25,000 is the request.
Second. Motion by Hughley, second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
And authorize chairman's sign.
Hughley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wulver.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
There you are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the work you guys do.
It's nice to see that you have the support of your leadership over there when the going gets tough.
Reminding who rides the big horse, that's all I was gonna say.
Moving on to our next agenda item, which is discuss and consider adoption of Resolution Number 2022-11 for the revocation of the authorization to grant conditional use permits conferred upon the Lincoln County Planning Commission pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 23-114.01, Section 4. Authority to grant conditional use permits will now be the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. This was an item that we had put on the agenda and we discussed last week. For those in the audience that may not be aware, it's part of a, just an accountability and transparency measure that we're working to get put in place. It's nothing to do... Fantastic job. I think it's just kind of broadly agreed upon that issues like this should, should have some accountability to the taxpayers, to the, to the voters, to the citizens of Lincoln County. They should be able to go to an elected representative, uh, and hold them accountable. Right, wrong, or indifferent, that hasn't been the case in the past, so that's why this, uh, resolution is before us today.
Could I ask a question, Judy?
Sure, absolutely.
Judy?
Good morning, Judy.
Good morning, Judy. Question is, is when there are public hearings with the, that would be in front of this board, would the Planning Commission Board be in attendance also?
Um, probably not unless you requested them, and they would have to not be a quorum. So you could maybe request that the chair or the vice chair. We do have two vice chairs and a chairperson, so you could request that one or two of them be in attendance, but I don't believe that you could have any more than that there.
How many members are there?
Um, there are 11.
11.
Yeah.
I think the points we've taken, they could certainly represent the view of the Planning Commission.
Yes, generally what happens, so I do this all the time with the city. This would not be much different. So you would receive a recommendation from the Planning Commission, that would be in front of you. So you would have a cover sheet that says, okay, this is what was discussed at the Planning Commission, and this is their recommendation. You would see that, and then, of course, I would be here to represent what their recommendation is. Now, if it's something really controversial, then maybe you would want to have one of them show up. But their recommendation is going to be written form so that you will see everything that has occurred at that meeting.
You know, if it's really controversial, maybe they, one of them could just take my place.
Well, there you go. But, um, yeah, you know, usually, um, I do not have a Planning Commissioner in attendance at city council meetings. So usually, it's just their recommendation that you will see with all the documents that they received. And any, um, testimony if someone would happen to bring in some document that they want as an exhibit, that would also be forwarded to you. So you can see how the Planning Commission based their recommendation, what they based it on, and you'll see that in front of you.
If there was a particular item to be discussed in the, uh, public hearing, would it be appropriate to ask for one of the chair or vice chairs to attend?
I think it, you know, situation dictates, but absolutely, that's, that's our prerogative to be able to, you know, answer questions that we may have of what transpired. Now granted, as Judy said, we'll have all that documentation for our review. I was approached by a couple of city councilmen after our meeting last week on this issue, and they said that adding this extra layer, um, has worked well. I mean, they thoroughly enjoy it, especially for contentious issues. Confinement, facilities, potential windmill parks for power generation. Just having that extra layer for discussion and consideration is something that they, they highly encourage the county to take. So coming from elected representatives that are going through it, that was reaffirmation of my thoughts on, on the subject.
And it does give all of you an opportunity, because with conditional use permits, you can add conditions onto whether they did it, just like what we did with the Dormi Network and adding that condition of having a agreement for the roads to be put on there. So if there is something that Planning Commission may have overlooked or didn't feel was quite necessary, you can add that condition to whatever their recommendation is. So you can always add additional considerations.
We can strip out conditions as well.
Yes, exactly.
Judy, to your point, this kind of brings us in line with the way it's structured for the city as well.
Yes.
So we're basically mirroring the way they handle these permits.
Yes.
If we do this.
And like I said the last time, you're not the only county that would be doing it. There are a lot of counties that do the same thing. They have that second layer. There's just a few of us that don't, so, yeah.
I just see, as, as Lincoln County grows, hopefully in the near future, with some of the things that we'll probably be discussing today, um, I see that there's a need for this, so.
I had, I had a few reservations, but that, that satisfies.
I mean, I do like the putting elected officials as the final approval, um, for accountability purposes, so I, I support it very much.
Sounds like the beginning of a motion.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2022-11 for the revocation of the authorization to grant conditional use permits conferred upon the Lincoln County Planning Commission pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 23-114.01.
Second.
And give authority to grant conditional use permits will now be the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
Motion by Wulver. Second. Second by Weems. Any further discussion on this? Tyler, thank you for drafting this. Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Wulver.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Who has the original?
Jesus. You know, I'm so used to handing things down for his signature on those kinds of things. We've been trying to run that. I start getting little note cards from him.
This is where we need to stop. That was the motion made by...
It's a good thing there's five of us here.
There is a good one. We have five.
He's at the top of the page.
Yeah, first.
I'm usually the bottom. I move up and down.
I'll start moving around.
Rotation. Moving on to our next agenda item. Discuss and consider a contribution agreement with Dormi Network LLC for an asphalt overlay project for a portion of North Maxwell Road. This is something that's been in discussion for several months now regarding the golf course development that is going north of Maxwell, about 10 miles, that I believe is going to be called Grable. Resort-style golf facility. This is one of those conditional use permits that went before the Lincoln County Planning Commission, where they asked for the Dormi Network to work with Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to come to an agreement on quarter mile of dirt-sand road at the end of the oil surface before their, their location. It's my understanding that they have broke ground up there, which is exciting news for Lincoln County. Tyler and I have worked with the Dormi Network and come to, um, this is an agreement that is obviously pending discussion here, and here, guys, is consideration for 50% of that project to be paid by Lincoln County, and 50% of it to be paid by Dormi Network LLC, which I think is something that's a great agreement in my personal opinion. Looks like the, the bids came back from Shellco Asphalt Paving in the amount of $453,789, so we would pay 50% of that amount. Which, given the, the cost of everything that is skyrocketing, that is a fantastic price tag for this project, so. Given that, Tyler, am I missing anything in that discussion that we had with them? Pertain for my colleagues' consideration?
No, briefly on the agreement. The final agreement will have an actual copy of Shellco's, uh, bid attached to it. The agreement, as it's written, obligates the county for half of that bid. And so if that proportion of the project has a cost overrun, that's either on them entirely, or they can come back to the table and negotiate with us further. I did not want to get us in a situation where we're contributing half to an open-ended money furnace, so. While 453,789 seems like quite a bit for a quarter mile, that's just the world we live in, so.
Probably could have been much, much higher.
Well, if the county were paying for it by ourselves, it'd have been 453,000 for it, just for us, so.
I will also state Dormi Network has been very amicable in these conversations. They're wanting to get this project going, and absolutely willing to partner and work with us however it needs, so.
Is there any time that this project is to begin or to be completed by?
They're wanting, uh, project to start after their development is, is basically completed. They're not wanting the congestion, the, the work on the road to interfere with what they have going on as far as groundwork and construction out there, or beating up the, the new asphalt with all that heavy machinery that's going in and out, so.
And Shellco is aware of the fact that this wouldn't be done this year, or even possibly next year, but in 2024, that being the case?
I don't know what information's going to provide to Shellco. They had a bid through their...
They had a bid through their general contractors, I think it's Samson. So I, I would like to tell you, yes, Sheldon's aware of that, but I don't know.
But at this point, they're the primary on the, on the project.
Correct.
Samson is?
No.
Dormi.
Dormi is. Oh, yeah.
So. Colleagues of mine, any other questions?
My concern is, is that this doesn't take place until in 2024, which that operation is supposed to be golf-ready May of 2024 is what has been publicized. I'd like to know that Shellco is committed to that price for that period of time.
You know what? God bless Sheldon, but it sounds like it could only be to our advantage unless the price goes down because of, in the way it's written, any overage would go to Dormi, am I correct the way it's written?
The way this is written, it only obligates us to what is in that bid. If we get to 2024 and Sheldon comes back and says, sorry, it's gonna be 600,000 now, we're only obligated for half of this.
Or if the prices go down.
Well, that's the risk we take on everything we contract for.
I don't know that I see prices going down.
Especially with asphalt.
Especially with asphalt. I don't.
But to your point, Jerry, if you would like me to check with Dormi and see if they have talked to Sheldon about a potential start date on this, I can certainly do that. They're currently operating under the conditional use permit that I talked to Judy about. It's still waiting on this item, but they're well aware that it can be revoked if we don't come to some agreement on this. So I I imagine they will continue to be amenable. But if you want that information before you make a decision, I can do that.
No, I I don't think we need to know when they do that. It just that we're talking about something that could be a year and a half, two years down the road.
Correct.
And you make a good point. Prices probably are not going to be going down, especially with oil.
Yeah, unfortunately.
As long as we all know, we got a timeframe here that we're working within.
We'll work with Dormi Network and Shellco to make sure that we're budgeting appropriately.
And that would be important for our road department to know when we need to have our.
Jason, you've had conversations with them, haven't you?
With Dormi? Yeah, just during the the application process here.
So Becky, help me on this. If we need to budget for this half, our half of that, we don't know what year it's going to be in.
Budget for the next year.
Yeah, we'd probably budget for the 2023, 24. I'll put this in my file reminder.
Okay. Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure?
Satisfying the questions that I had. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the contribution agreement with Dormi Network LLC for asphalt overlay project for a portion of North Maxwell Road.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Hugley. Any further discussion?
Authorize the chairman to sign it?
And we would like to have the chairman to sign it.
Yes.
Hearing no other discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wohler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, a discussion on control of black-tailed prairie dogs in Lincoln County. I believe Commissioner Woodruff, you asked for this to be on the agenda.
Yes, I did. And thank you for having this topic brought up. It's been been made aware to me that there is a Nebraska Revised Statute 23-3803 that allows counties to authorize a prairie dog management app and have a plan in place as to how to deal with those. At the current time, Sheridan County here in Nebraska is the only county out of 93 counties in Nebraska that has one of these prairie dog management plans in place. I've had the opportunity to speak with two of their three board members. Third one that was in place on 2016 when they passed this resolution is no longer on the board. I did speak to the other two, and they have given it, it's been up five and a half years in place, and they have relayed to me that this has been very positive in their control of difficult areas. And it has been very positive from the standpoint of respecting both parties, those that prefer to have prairie dogs on their property and those that prefer not to. So I would think it would be very much in Lincoln County's best interest to have one of these plans in place so that property owners that border these towns could have some relief from the damage that is caused by these rodents. They're not canines, they're rodents. And I think that's important to note, as well as there is Nebraska statute to this effect. So what my recommendation was is that, and I'll let Tyler chime in here as well, he's looked at this resolution that was passed by Sheridan County in 2016. But I think it would be very important for Lincoln County to do something very similar.
So, logistically, how does this work?
Honestly, we can contract with or make better use of the services we're already getting through the USDA and the Wildlife Management. That is, as nearly as I can tell, specifically provided for. You can contract with somebody. You're essentially conferring upon a third party the county's authority to do force control. And that's the big part of what is is in this. I had talked to Commissioner Woodruff last week and sort of shooting from the hip said, I don't think there's a way to force control prairie dogs like there are noxious weeds. Turns out I was wrong. So write that down on the calendar. Please. If the if the board wants to do this and we put together the management plan, it allows us to do force control. It allows us to send, well, bury, I guess, out onto someone's property after proper notice and giving them a chance to address the problem themselves. And then they can simply force control the population in whatever manner they so choose. Well, that's not entirely true. Our management plan has to spell out what manner, but I think we'd probably work with them. Other than some of the notice provisions, it works very, very similar to force control weeds. They get a longer runway to take care of the problem themselves, but essentially it's the same sort of measures. The big key difference is the prairie dog management plan will provide for adjoining landowners who want them for whatever reason. They are given an opportunity to maintain them themselves. I believe there's a document they have to sign stating that they'll do so. But that allows people who want it to keep them and people who don't want them to have them removed.
Yeah, having had issues with neighbors over the years with prairie dogs that inevitably move across the road or across the fence line, they don't seem to read signs. I think it's, I have to agree with Jerry that I think we should be proactive on this because I've also seen parcels with absentee landowners that rent to someone else and they simply don't have the motivation or interest in controlling these. And then they inevitably devalue neighboring properties and they migrate to their pastures. I think it's a great idea, Jerry.
Some of the mechanics of the plan that Sheridan County put in place, not that we would have to mirror that, but the two gentlemen I spoke with said that their plan was working very nicely five years down the road. And their plan called for an advisory council of five individuals that took complaints and looked at them, evaluated them, gave recommendations to the board as to what might be done or not done. But it's, and in their case up in Sheridan County, they had a weed superintendent that was also part-time working on this project because the two pests, rodents and noxious weeds, kind of fit in the same bucket in their opinion, and I'd have to agree with them. But that was kind of the gist of it. And again, I would agree with you, Ken. This is, this causes tremendous problems as far as neighboring properties that wish not to have them in their property and do realize the damage that these rodents cause.
Mr. Chairman, it seems to me either maybe a special committee appointed by you or the Roads Committee, because, you know, I don't think sometimes prairie rats, I mean prairie dogs, I'm sorry.
You were right the first time.
Right.
Realize where the fences at and sometimes do cause problems on our county roads. So one of those two groups might be appropriate to work with our deputy county attorney in addressing and adopting some kind of resolution that may be fit.
I I do feel that it's important as good stewards of our county that we help people maybe with providing more information or support. I do know, as I sit on the board for noxious weeds, that department is already spread pretty thin during the active part of the year. But maybe in interlocal agreement with our wildlife game specialists, since we are contributing a large sum of money to their operation already, maybe we could come up with something where they work together. Because noxious weeds is out there looking at the land anyway, maybe notification and support of the wildlife specialists. But I do like the idea of us taking action. The noxious weed department has an eight-step process that they use for notifying landowners, and I feel like it's really a good model and would help us with the rodent problem also.
Well, and that's something that Sheridan County mentioned to me as well. Your comments just reminded me of that. They have a plan in place where offending property owners are given notice to take care of it themselves if they wish not to. Then you can have a forced control. So there are some safeguards in there for the property owners that do wish to maintain their rodent towns. But we had this on the agenda just for discussion only. I would recommend that we give our deputy county attorney the latitude to form a resolution for us to act upon in the near future.
Don't think I need anything more than that, then.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't know that. I don't know that I want to beat this to death with a committee, but Jerry and Michaela, given your your level of research on this, and I know that you have interest in it, I'd encourage you guys to work with the deputy county attorney to come up with a solution. If we if we go down the route of having a committee of five members or something along that line to review this, that's some additional logistic challenges that we need to thoroughly think out. So I'd have, I'd ask that you two work with with Tyler on this to come up with a solution and recommendations and bring that back to the full board. Does that work?
That works for me.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, discuss and consider adopting a resolution creating an inland port authority. I did ask Gary Pearson to join us today to to provide some more insight to this project. This is something that has been in the works, oh goodness, over a year now. We've been discussing this.
Actually longer than that.
Well, not the inland, not the inland port aspect, but the industrial rail park, yes. Which I think it's important to note, these are two completely separate but very complementary projects. 2021 legislation was passed through LB 156 that authorized the state of Nebraska, authorized for five inland ports in the state of Nebraska through the review process of the Department of Economic Development. And so we've had numerous conversations, Gary and I have, as well as Tyler, and I invited Commissioner Weems in on a couple of those conversations regarding the project that we have at hand with the industrial rail park and how can we make an inland port jive with that and really augment and take that project to the next level. We have been working, obviously, on the industrial rail park near Hershey for many years now. And this last week, we got some fantastic news, due in large part to the to the hard work that Gary and his team have been doing at the the North Flat Area Chamber and Development Corporation. So I want to make sure that we give them some very public praise and congratulations on that. We did receive an award letter for $30 million in match funding for that project. Again, that project is separate from what we are discussing here today, but very inter- intrately related. So the inland, the industrial rail park, once fully built out, will have a tremendous impact on on Lincoln County and the larger region that we serve here in Lincoln County as an economic hub. And I think that the discussion item before us here is just going to, again, augment that, take that to the next level. It's it's really, it's big thinking and vision being put in place. So, again, highly compatible, an industrial rail park and an inland port, it makes sense, especially given our our geographic location, our strategic location is a nexus for intermodal transportation. Yeah, I think that if if we pass this today, and I know that we've had this as discussion before, it will help with expediting the absorption rate of the industrial rail park. It will help us market Lincoln County to prospective business and industry. And more importantly, it'll assist us in helping our regional and our local business industry, and more importantly, our ag producers gain much-needed additional market access. I think that both of these projects will also allow for fantastic, long-lasting and transformative impact on the communities, all the communities here in Lincoln County. So with that, I'd invite Gary up to to speak to what's and answering questions that we may have for him as far as logistics and what we have done thus far to date on both of these projects, but specifically the the inland port. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunz, super commissioners. I think you laid it out very well, Chris. Really what you're looking at today by adopting a resolution which incorporates the recent economic impact study with it, it opens the door that you'll be prepared to go forward with an application to the state when we know the ground rules. We thought they would probably be released prior to now, but they haven't been. The Department of Economic Development, obviously, and got a lot of things thrown in their direction following the legislative session, especially with the ARPA funding. They had to work all the details out, a lot of different funding programs. So they've been really busy with limited staff. And so we we do not know yet what the proposed rules are. We'll know within, we'll have 30 days in which to comment on them. And then they'll they'll have the application process formalized. It does have some language in it about first come, first served, just as our industrial rail park did. But it also, they have a complementary law inserted into where it's all merit-based, too. And so certainly now, knowing that the industrial park is no longer speculative, that it has become reality with the award of the funds, it's our responsibility now to to move it to the additional levels. One thing, the railroad, Union Pacific, they've been magnificent to work with on this whole process. And our consultant that we had do some of the preliminary design on it, have both cautioned in their previous experience and highly recommend that new infrastructure is actually placed into the park up until the time that we have an anchor project. It's all about accommodating the various types of industry that might locate there, be flexible enough that you can design accordingly. We have a project in place right now and going through a preliminary study process that would be a rather significant anchor. So we're, the preliminary results on that look very promising as well. So that would really help us launch everything forward. And we'd have some process to go through with the village of Hershey. And we'd have some process to go through with the village of Hershey. But certainly, right in the middle of the park itself is the existing, now vacated Greenbrier property. This would serve the best interests of the rail park if that could be the catalyst operation for the movement of traffic in and out of the rail park, but also would make an ideal location situation for an inland port authority and all the things that could unfold with that. The designation of inland port authority opens the opportunity for what's called an FTZ, and sometimes referred to as a foreign trade zone, sometimes as a free trade zone, but it really helps eliminate some of the customs backlog on the west coast or east coast when products coming in, and you can actually perform some of those duties right here on site. So if, you know, it certainly accelerates our rail park attraction for additional industry and business considerably by having that designation. So I think this would be a wonderful marriage of partnerships to come together to make this work, and we give Lincoln County the best bang for its buck in something that's very, very effective, and it'll be unique for central Western Nebraska.
Can I ask a question, Gary? So basically, what you're saying, so everybody understands it, the inland port authority, if we establish one, we're basically putting our feet under us if, in fact, we get awarded one of those five openings or opportunities to enhance what we can do with the industrial park. Is that it in a nutshell?
That's correct. The first applications in will be the ones first considered, you know, based on merit, but we want to be as prepared to do that as we were on the industrial rail park.
To follow up on Ken's comments, Gary, if this resolution was in place, do you feel and from the folks you visited with, does that provide the folks in making that decision, does that provide them with some good incentive to award that to this area?
They know it becomes real. They know that your interest is more than speculative, it is firm, and it makes all the difference in the world when you're applying for designation. So the more prepared you can be in advance, the better. They did highly encourage, based on Chris's questions to them, they thought this was a really good step on behalf of Lincoln County to get everything in place. They are determined that it is going to, they're going to try to space these out across the state, and certainly we would be in a prime position, especially now they know that our rail park is real, to be strongly considered for one of those designations.
And does the proximity to Union Pacific affect that, in your opinion?
Oh, it's absolutely critical. I mean, we have something unique that several that are probably going to apply have not yet received, and that's confirmed access onto the main line. And we have that in writing from Union Pacific. We went through a year process to get that designation, and it is now in writing. And so that was a huge step, but that will also be a strong consideration. The application also calls for an economic impact study, which same consultant that did our rail park economic impact study then amended certain sections of it to reflect how an inland port can. It does incorporate into the study the impact that sustainable beef is going to have on our community, that frozen beef shipments, you know, this certainly complements and assists that project. So some of the numbers you'll see in the study do reflect the impact that sustainable beef is having as well. I thought Tyler crafted it extremely well in the resolution and putting everything together in pretty short order, and I really appreciate his efforts.
Can we get some copies printed out for... And did you catch my note on that? Yeah, so to your question, Jerry, the proximity to the Union Pacific main line is actually a must, for our situation anyway. There's certain criteria laid out in LB 156 that is now codified in the state statute as far as conditions and requirements for an inland port, and we meet those requirements being less than a mile from a rail main line and less than two miles from a nationally strategic four-lane highway system. The other is a navigable river. We have a great river system, but it's not essentially navigable, as well as proximity to a high-class airport, which we have that, but it doesn't meet the mileage requirement distance. So we are utilizing the proximity, which is adjacent to this district, and then, of course, it does have the spur in, and we have that major hurdle that we have already crossed as far as authorization for access to that line. So the other is the I-80, proximity to I-80. So a couple of other key points, LB 156 allows the county to designate an area. We can grow that district or shrink it down as long as it does not go less than 300 acres. We have that, we have permission, we have purchase options and permissions from landowners in that area. We've done a lot of work in that regard to get to the needed acreage. Should we consider and authorize the creation of this district and inland port authority and the state then awards one of the five to us? The county has the purview, and we're the only political subdivision in this region that meets the qualification, has the purview to appoint a nine-member board as the inland port authority, and that would be on a revolving term basis for those members. So the county has a lot of supervision and authority in this process, which I think is key. It allows us great latitude in ensuring that we have good members coming into our community and helping us expand our tax base and diversify our economy, that is much, while also allowing us to make sure that we don't have anybody necessarily that would be adverse to who we are here in Lincoln County, so.
Mr. Chairman and/or Gary, the first step is to get the application into the state, as I understand it correct.
First state, the first step is actually this board authorizing the creation of an inland port district and authority.
Right, so aren't they two different things? Isn't the authority one thing and the district another, the inland port?
Technically, they are, but the state statute allows us to combine it into one.
Okay, next question I would have are liabilities, potential, what are potential downsides that we need to know about, if any?
So the economic impact analysis that was done by Eric Campbell highlights that there, aside from the immediate area and possible displacement through development of property owners, which would again be an at-will situation, them selling to business or industry, there really is none for larger Lincoln County.
Yes, we have five-year options.
Right, so that's what I wanted to make sure everybody understood. This isn't a condemnation process. This is a willing, this is a willing partner here and a willing partner here. That's important for people to understand, that we're not going in and taking this land. This is something willing that they're being compensated fairly on a negotiation. So that's important for the public to know.
Fair market value, absolutely. Yeah, this is not an imminent domain type situation. This is, this is a great partnership in working, you know, hand-in-hand with those landowners in that area, them understanding the value that this provides.
And I would say most of the property, we've also done phase one environmental studies completed on it, and have come back with no significant findings. So that's a good thing. Greenbrier is going through their process too. They're very confident that everything's going to be fine, just because they know that the types of operations they did didn't have any kind of, they didn't use any chemicals that would have caused any kind of...
A question, you mentioned a nine-member board. Who owns or who does the inland port authority belong to?
So that's a great question. Essentially, it becomes a quasi-political subdivision. They have the ability to bond and do the expenditures that they need to run that district as they need. They act as a singular point of authority for that district. Now, to add to that, this board has, again, the authority to appoint people to that authority. That's where our purview comes into place.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry. As well as Lincoln County would maintain, well, I don't want to get ahead of us on the agenda, but should we take additional steps to secure certain property that would be owned by Lincoln County?
This would be a standalone government entity.
It would be just, probably something you could relate it to, is like the city's creation of an airport authority.
Yep.
You know, so it's a quasi-political subdivision within the framework of the city of North Platte. This would be similar for Lincoln County, where you are going to, you know, have some discretion, especially with the appointment of the board members. Obviously, the county's going to have to be very involved in that, you know, throughout the lifespan of the authority itself, and so.
And we give, we set the jurisdictional boundaries for that authority through the district, setting the boundaries of the district, so.
This authority would answer to this board?
In a roundabout way.
I don't think so.
They, not on day-to-day decisions or their operations, but we would have purview over who sits on that authority.
Yeah, and that would be different than the airport authority, who are directly elected by the public, the members are, whereas this, you'll always have that discretion. It'll work a little bit similar to planning commission, but I think you're right, they do have the authority to make decisions and, but like every political subdivision, they have to have public meetings, have to advertise them, they're open, you know, to any citizen that wants them to.
But to that point, I think it's important that they do have that latitude for the decision-making process, because it allows for the water to be clear and not muddied up by politics that can enter into the equation, things like that. Their charge, their charter is going to be maximizing the efficient use of that district to benefit commerce, so.
And the board members are appointed by us.
Correct.
Yeah, there really isn't anything like it existing in the state right now, so that's, it's a learning curve and process for everybody. And so I'm sure we'll get some coaching from the state, you know, as well as how these operate.
It's new to the state of Nebraska, but it's not new in concept nationwide, and there's fantastic success stories out there throughout. Ohio has well over 100 inland ports in the confines of their state, and they are tremendous, they have a tremendous impact on economic development.
And if you look towards the shipping industry in general, like at the UPS hub in Chicago, we have an inland port authority there, and it helps the moving of product, bringing it in, moving it back out tremendously. And North Platte is a hub already for the semi and rail traffic that comes through here, so I think it would just complement if we are going to look at developing. And I think having an inland port authority would be a wonderful complement to the rail park.
Tyler, can I, when you drive to this, well, two points, I guess. First of all, we are doing this primarily, at this point, to enhance our position to bring monies, further monies in and develop this. But if this goes nowhere, just hypothetically, if it goes nowhere, we just simply repeal this and go on, we just close out the inland port authority if we don't have use of it?
Yes, so if we make the application, either we're not awarded one, for whatever reason, the board decides they don't want the hassle of putting it all together, simply sign another resolution repealing or revoking this one, and then it's gone. If we are awarded one and we do establish it and you want to get rid of it, there's a whole process for that. But if we never establish one, then it's just as simple as taking this resolution off books.
Mr. Chairman?
I absolutely am. Long awaited.
I think Joe might still be reading a little bit.
Do we have a resolution number?
Well, 2022...
I do know, yeah, we do have. I was just checking to see if you knew what it was.
We have the original.
Checking to as we...
I think you have the original.
I have the original, I'm not touching it, I'm just looking at it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2022-12, creating an inland port authority.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Uller. Any further discussion on this? Going once, going twice? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Hubley?
Aye.
Wiems?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
I'm going to continue, I'm going to hand this down for signature. I do want to thank you, Tyler, for the work that you put into this.
Like he had a choice.
I second that.
You were going to make him do it anyway, weren't you?
Prairie dogs and inland port authorities all in the same league.
Oh, I've got the entire second page here tomorrow. Might as well hide and work it down in the Meyer Strope.
Moving on to our next agenda item, which is related. Discuss and consider the purchase of property located at 18610 West Highway 30, Hershey, Nebraska from Greenbrier Rail Services. This has been an integral part of the discussion and the planning for the inland port. This property is very strategic to the success of not only the inland port, but the larger development project of the Hershey Rail Park. Greenbrier Rail Services unfortunately went out of business due to the COVID-19 pandemic. They publicly state so as their reasoning for going out of business. Before they did that, they were an amazing partner and really, to date, have been an amazing partner with North Platte Area Chamber Development.
They didn't go out of business totally, they just...
Closed that facility, correct. They had to do some consolidations due to the COVID-19 pandemic, but thank you, Jerry. They have been an integral partner initially and even now, working with us to ensure that their ownership of that rail spur that connects to the UP main line, that we had access to it. With the closing of their facility, that property has been on the market. We could not guarantee that somebody did not come in and purchase that property that would be adverse to the larger development of both the rail park and... that would be adverse to the larger development of both the rail park and inland port and the impacts that those projects would have on Lincoln County in a positive manner. With the creation of an inland port and the conversations that we've been having, the planning that we've been doing over these couple of years, it makes sense, in my opinion, for this facility to be the location, the headquarters location of the inland port, as well as a potential inspection facility, should we get free trade zone designation. And customs needs to come in and utilize a location for their inspections of cargo coming in from international locations, as well as vice versa, things being shipped out that our ag producers or potential business may have. So it's been my recommendation that the county go ahead and purchase this property from a strategic aspect, taking control of both the facility that exists and more importantly, the rail spur that does connect and that we have formal authorization of access for. From a strategic and planning purpose, it allows the inland port to then control what comes in to the larger development. From an inspection standpoint, should we get a free trade zone designation, customs would then have greater control and latitude to do what they need to do. And we could then build numerous spurs off of that to service the larger development and potential community partners coming in and investing in our communities here in Lincoln County. So that's why I'm putting it on for consideration. I think it's a one-time transformative and worthwhile expenditure that we utilize with our ARPA funding that we received to go ahead and purchase that facility. It is on the market for, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but $4.5 million, which is far less than what I think that facility is worth, having toured the facility and the infrastructure that does exist with that spur. So I'm going to open it up to robust conversation with my colleagues. And Gary is obviously still here to answer any questions that we may have, so.
I have a question for Tyler, clarification for Tyler. I've looked at this facility as well, and I would agree that it is the linchpin to the development of the entire thing because of the fact that if you buy the building, you have the ownership of that rail spur, that switch, that mainline switch. I should say it to be more specific.
And that is completely tied together, correct?
Correct, if you buy the building, you get that switch. And those switches are in excess of a million dollars to have that installed. Now, I've dealt with UP on those, and you can't hire a contractor to put that in. They put it in and send you a bill. But it is a key to the entire process of developing the rail park to have that mainline switch so that you can bring freight in and out. And to Chris's point, you would have to eventually add an additional ingress egress switch, probably on the east end somewhere, to expedite freight in and out, but it's a key point. But Tyler, I wanted to make sure, and I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway, not knowing for sure, but if the county would own this, we have absolutely no issue. Should the end of the world be imminent and the thing's not going to work, we can always divest ourselves of this property. Speak to that, if you would.
Yes, so the county board has the power to sell real property owned by the county, much in the same way we sell excess movable equipment. It's, so the highest bidder. So quite frankly, you could start a bidding war for it if we don't ever need it. I don't see that coming to pass, but yes, the county can absolutely sell it if this all goes south.
Okay. And to that point, I think it's a wise investment from that standpoint. Should the large development fail, I think that we could earn our money back.
The other question to ask of Tyler is, is this an approved use of ARPA funds? Or the funds that were made available by the ARPA Act?
Short answer, yes. The somewhat more complicated answer is the actual final rule that ended up in the treasury regulations allows for a standard election of up to $10 million in lost government revenue. If the county takes that, and that's what we're going to do, you can use that $10 million, it's up to, for the provision of any government service. The only things you can't do with it are pay for pension obligations, pay off judgments, or put it in a rainy day fund. Those are the limitations on that $10 million.
I think maybe just for public knowledge, it's a 34-acre site. It was built in 2011, so it's a fairly new facility. 53,000 square feet on the facility. Forty-plus of that is actually production floor. Really nice offices there. And grounds have always been kept up, fairly good for a vacated building. And like Chris said, the Greenbrier officials have been really excellent to work with. They knew we were working with a potential prospect that would have some great interest in the facility. So they've been very patient working with us. And the 4.5 million is actually what it's valued at for tax purposes. So it definitely has passed that scrutiny as well. But in today's construction world and costs, it's a good bang for the buck. Fairly new facility.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just so that I understand, it's my understanding that the 4.5 million that were purchased, or that we, if we pass this resolution, would authorize us to purchase something that then would have the potential for private investors to come into to increase the economic growth in Lincoln County. I mean, we're facilitating that for future growth. Is that my understanding, that we're just, we are a facilitator and that's what we're trying to do?
That is the current, that is correct, correct point and question, yes. This would be the county purchasing the facility, taking it off the market, then leasing it or coming to an arrangement with the inland port authority. Should we get that award of one of the five and create the nine-member authority? They would then, in my vision, utilize that facility as their headquarters administrative space. And I mean, there's a roughly a 48,000-square-foot bay that's inside that building that could be utilized for inspections. But yes, we would be, the 4.5 in assessed value that would be coming off of the tax rolls because the county would be getting it and it would become exempt, is going to be more than made up for through us facilitating further development of private entities coming into the county with developments in the hundreds of millions of dollars.
Plus, I think that we probably down the road would have the potential, Tyler, of regaining some of that, whether through lease of, you know, a switch, the building, whatever. I mean, there are ways that we could probably recoup some of that money too, or down the road.
Yes, it does provide us an avenue for diversifying revenue streams for the county.
Okay, thank you.
Through a lease arrangement and fees for the switch, so, yes.
Hope that's not a dire emergency. The purchase price has been stated. If we approve this, what other costs, if any, are associated with that purchase?
It's a great question. Gary, correct me if I'm wrong on the amount, which would be probably less because their taxes would not be associated with it, but they're paying roughly 80.
You'd have, like any property transaction, there'd be some closing costs, those kind of things. There is some equipment, you know, those kind of things. It probably would, they'll obviously liquidate what they have out there, but they'd probably get county first shot at getting it. And they're in the process of putting the inventory together. So it'd be easiest to leave it there than trying to go get it from somewhere else. But it won't be a big change.
There was, when I toured the facility, there was a tremendous amount of equipment, machinery, et cetera, inside that building. I have no idea what it does or who would have any interest in that.
It would not be of interest to the county. I mean, it's very specialized for railcar, wheel fabrication, those kind of things.
Pretty expensive milling equipment comes to those wheels.
So they've just obviously been storing it there because it's expensive to move and they just have not chosen to do that yet. But they know if this intent to purchase gets signed, you know, they know what their timeline is and they need to, they'll work with the purchasing entity to get it out of there, whatever it's late.
You mentioned intent to purchase, I thought there was more than.
If that's what you, they've offered an intent to purchase or outright purchase. So it's, it's.
Either or.
Yeah, I, we were just waiting for the state to make some additional rulings that, so we knew exactly how it should orchestrate the purchase of it, so. That's the only thing that was kind of up in the air.
And I think that's a key point that we need to highlight in this conversation. We don't have a formal, we don't have, there is a purchase option the chamber does have that has them listed just through conversations that I've been having with Gary as far as kind of getting as much information prepared as possible. And we are waiting to hear back from Department of Economic Development. The crux of the situation is we want to ensure that any dollar that gets invested into the larger development of the industrial rail park, which this would be part of, that that is qualifying for the match dollars, that 30 million in match dollars. So we're waiting on clarification from attorneys with DED to determine if the county purchases it in our name, that that is a qualifying investment that would be utilized for match dollars. It's our legal counsel's opinion that it would be, but our legal counsel may have differing opinions than theirs. And we want to make sure that everybody's on the same table, up to the same table and on the same level playing field, so. That said, we could utilize the agreement as it's written to use an intermediary, and there's good assigns language in there that allows the Chamber Development Corporation then to assign that to Lincoln County. So Tyler, do you have input on that?
No.
No.
I knew what he was going to say.
Just making sure I'm clearly articulate with this.
One thing we did when we crafted this entire legislation and introduced the rail park funding on the statewide level, that I made sure there was language inserted in there. For instance, we have to be the developer of the property, the Chamber Development Corporation, but say we land this anchor project, which is in the neighborhood of between $300 million and $400 million, they'll eventually want to own that property, you know. And so there is language there that we can, as long as the state gives grants their permission, you know. Reality is, you know, we're also a facilitator. And we just want to enhance industry capability in Lincoln County. And this certainly opens the doors, been closed for 75 years. That being rail access. And in addition, if you own inland port authority, it makes it that much more attractive and you're going to draw attention that we haven't seen for a long, long time in Lincoln County. So we want to be as prepared as possible. Obviously, the governing rules were created by somebody other than us.
So the chamber, EFCO, has the option to purchase this. And you would theoretically, or sequence would be, you would assign that to someone else's.
Yes.
Does that end your relationship with building this down the road?
No, no, it only affects the Greenbrier facility. We just, what we did is, we didn't want, because it's so critical to the rail park, and you know, and they've had it vacated for a couple of years now. They obviously, they're motivated to sell. We didn't want something to happen to the facility that wouldn't necessarily complement what we're trying to do there because it's like you can't set a linchpin to the whole development. So we crafted the language. It hasn't been initiated yet because we told them we were working with an entity very interested in the property. If we can get the state's permission, the name on that purchase agreement may change. And they totally understood that, part of that. And but like all prospects, we treated it totally confidential up till today, so.
And you know, Gary, the county might, I mean, it might sound selfish to say this, but as to Joe's point about we are facilitating economic growth, we're, I mean, this is key. This is key, this mainline switch is everything. But the county then has an opportunity, as I see it, to have a usury fee as we expand this rail park and be able to recapture funds that can offset property tax, which we're always looking for ways to do that. And that's just a tiny piece of it, but the real deal, bang for the buck, is the expansion of the jobs and all the commerce that goes with 500, 800,000 people, initial startups and.
And the evaluations for government.
So I think that's, and you know, Tyler's made me very comfortable with the fact that, God forbid, we have a train wreck, pardon the pun, on this whole project. We just liquidate the building, but that switch, that switch is everything to this.
Any further questions for Gary? Comments for discussion?
Thank you for your work, sir.
Thank you, thanks for the great partnership. I mean, everybody's just been wonderful to work so well together. Building Hershey's been outstanding as well, but there have been a lot of partnerships in this whole thing. And we got rewarded last week.
Well, I think we are all interested in building our tax base with quality industry and bringing in good jobs. I feel like it's our responsibility to make the most of these ARPA funds. And I feel like it's a great investment in all of Lincoln County, you know. So I appreciate your work and Tyler's work, and I feel like this is a good decision for all of us. So what are you looking for today?
I asked for a motion that authorizes us to start the negotiation process, either with us or pending feedback from DED through an intermediary of Chamber and Development Corporation. Would you understand that there'd be a science language that would be executed?
Tyler, do we need to consider just extending the purchase agreement or option in writing? Or do we, is there a point?
I'm confident the answer that I came to, but I wouldn't go spending $4.5 million taxpayer money without being absolutely certain. It's easy for me to say that.
This really isn't taxpayer money, although technically it is, but not really.
It's fresh off the presses. I think simply a motion allowing the county to begin negotiating the purchase of it would provide the flexibility to either enter into a purchase option or an outright purchase, depending on how quickly DED gets back to us. Either way, it leads to the purchase of the facility.
That was why I asked the question, because I want to make sure we give latitude to those that need it, specifically our attorney and EFCO.
Ultimately, what will come before the board after this motion would be a document to get signed. I think that's a purchase agreement or an option agreement. Okay?
Man, you ready?
I am.
Chairman, I would move to approve negotiation process with latitude to our legal counsel to work out details of either an extended purchase option or an outright. or an outright purchase of property located at eighteen six ten West Highway thirty, Hershey, Nebraska from Greenbrier Rail Services in conjunction with the development of the Hershey Industrial Park.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Ken, would, would you accept or would we consent to a friendly amendment?
Yes, I would.
And, uh, that was going to be to make the chairman so that we have an elected official on behalf of Lincoln County part of that negotiation with our, uh,
Absolutely.
Because when you put and or outright purchase, I think that we need to have him be part of that. And of course, we understand even saying that, it would take the vote of the full board, but if you would accept it, I think that would be appropriate.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Motion by Weems, second by Wuler. Any further discussion? Good point, Joe.
Yeah.
Great point. Thank you.
Great point.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Wuler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Brunt?
Aye.
Gary, thank you.
Go get them.
Work's just started, sir.
Yes, you're right.
That's exciting.
It is exciting. It's been a long time, a lot of work going into this. Yes. Next item on our agenda is Lincoln County employee recognition. We have three of them today. I want to make sure that we, one of them can't be with us today, so I will make sure.
Uh, we only have one here, it looks like. Amanda.
Amanda.
Hi, Amanda.
We're not able to make it.
She get all three of ours in?
So, but I want to make sure that we recognize the other two that aren't able to be with us today, uh, in the public, uh, public sphere. So, with that, Amanda, I'll have you come up first. This is something that, uh, Lincoln County has made a concerted effort to ensure we're doing to hope and prove and, and strengthen our, our culture that we have amongst our employees, making sure that we're taking time to very publicly show our appreciation for the work that, that's a harmful need to do. But you have done over Lincoln County in your capacity, working with the, uh, Lincoln County visitors. It is now going to be soon purchased, is in the plan. So, um, want to thank you for that. We sincerely appreciate it. I think I speak on behalf of the board. I know I speak on the behalf.
For the record, it's Reese Bader, that's her name.
Amanda Conne, thank you. For her five years, uh, service in, uh, so, thank you so much. I also want to highlight Bruce Schroeder, he's been with our Roads Department. He has served Lincoln County for forty years.
Wow.
Jason, if you wouldn't mind making sure that he gets this and he understands the sincere appreciation.
I'll do that. Thank you.
And then, uh, Rowan Gordon for five years of service. Uh, Lincoln County, I want to make sure that that is. Rowan Gordon?
Gordon.
Uh, she is with the county attorney's office. I don't believe that we have a need for a closed session today. So, we move on to our next agenda item and I keep this open as we finish signing the claims, which is hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. I would also open this up to members of the public, members of the public that have any, anything for the board. Brian? Nothing? How's the wildfire out, uh, by Maxwell?
They ordered plane.
They did order plane?
Then they canceled the plane.
Heard they had it controlled, so not out, but controlled.
Sparks got into a wood, big wood pile, the old wood pile that they had. Then they had that fund, they're trying to control that. After they thought they had everything controlled, then somehow sparks jumped the pond and started in the tree line behind the pond on the south side. So, still haven't heard if they've determined what the, the cause for that one was.
I heard it was double wheel axle that fell off the truck.
Then news.
The initial fire.
Yeah, the initial fire was started by an axle that came off of a semi on the interstate and rolled into the trees.
So, yeah.
At least the wind cooperated.
For the most part, yeah.
Could have been much worse.
Makes its own wind, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, they were, when they called for the plane, it was when it got into that, that next tree line south of that pond there that it couldn't get equipped in. It was, get on foot and, yeah. But once they got back there, they figured out.
They didn't need a plane. Just contain them, without doubt.
Yep.
Thank you.
Becky, I'd like to sign a copy of that resolution for the court after it's all officially filed. I assume I hand these down to.
Do we have the authority on the resolution? Can I get a copy of it? You have to get a copy of it. He's got a picture of it.
Here, take, there's one right here. Take mine. It should be somewhere. Is this it? You know what? Go next time.
atory discussions. For facilitator, yes. Thank you.
Bye, Mark.
Have a good day, everybody.
I've got twenty minutes in my ears, so, I mean, no more issues here than I normally do. Need to switch back.
Be anxious to read tomorrow's paper, tomorrow morning's paper. See what kind of, uh, press we get on there.
Yeah.
Or what would they weigh if you just?
You know, obviously, somebody who's been a long way away is in that business. It's never good. They might be zero, but because of the freight, you should be getting it somewhere.
I noticed, I noticed the signage on the wall that Birmingham, U.P. apparently have different specs on their wheels.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I figured they were standard, or maybe it's just the way they're cut the angles. Something, I don't know.
Was that?
Yes, it could. I got my fingers crossed. Thanks, Jason. True.
Yeah.
Well, he had, he had a lot of communication, so I think we know. Question. I keep telling you, I go sadly with me. I bought two for my neighbor ladies.
I mean, I need to buy a few more if you have them. I want the copper forty discount.
You said you're gonna give me a copy of it, I said you know where it's at. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Oh, so much fun. Thank you, Simon.
That's your free work. I wouldn't like to say I am going to make a monetary. I wouldn't like to say, I am going to make a monetary donation to the first of you still in the same club. Um, for the making of the sale, and if anybody would like to.
Aggregates contribution or to.
Take your money.
But we pay for the.
None, we pay them nothing. I, I offer. And the boys.
They have most of the money.
They get most of the projects. We pay them nothing.
What projects are you planning to do? These people that are operating the projects to get money outside of. They are probably doing projects. Like outside that. Or you have to tighten that up. Like gravel.
No. What?
It's true, if you make this, it doesn't count.
You're saying all kinds of things.
Some gravel.
I think the earth.
So. Susan, I usually get some. So.
Yeah.
Well, it's whether it's, it's still. You have to be terminated, I mean, you don't adopt.
What's, what's your. That's just.
Sorry, thanks, Ben.
Yeah. I got a card for Alex. How long do you have the efficiency?
She was so. Too long.
There's, but you're. She will appreciate the words.
Jason, did the salt shit guys give you any indication when they'd be back to?
Uh, they said they, they're planning on being complete with the entire project by end of July.
Really?
Yep.
Did they do a good job on the park, or your opinion?
Yeah, yeah, they did.
No, I gave.
They did a pretty short work of it, so, yeah, they did a good job.
Oh, can I have one?
Monday when they were out working it up, winds and dust and heat, I thought, my God. The reason why they did what they made.
Uh-huh, yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay now. Not that I should help at all, but I wasn't doing it anyway.
Just to. Well, that's probably.
I don't want to see an office on the floor.
I, I always take my stuff over intention and reason, but it doesn't always happen.
Kayla, did the weed board members, the gardening board, did they get invited, did they get a stipend or ten?
No, just, just. Oh, wait a minute, yes, I think they do, forty dollars, from it, except me.
How often do they leave?
Once a month. Wednesday morning and nine o'clock.
Wait, Steve, you saying?
Let me know what you find out down south.
Okay. Are you getting a lot of, you always get beat up with dry weather. Yeah, yeah, we're getting a few of the worries in there. There's a lot of car traffic going, I just began. And I don't know, the play guy, he did a good job trying to shape it up last week, and then they've just been crap out of it up there. Bringing this stuff into that north lot going on, so we can only line it up where it left, there's been a lot of car water.
It's hard, we're gonna head north on, on Buffalo this morning.
Yep, we're actually getting started on Watts today, so, good day working out there on Watts, trying to get some of that built up, so, yeah. And we're focusing our efforts now, so.
Did Charlie share the picture with you of the bonus they were given when they were working on Henson Trail? The swans guy was so happy to see them up there and the work that they were doing, that he stopped and gave them all his cream cones.
No, I did not.
They have, they snapped a picture with the swans truck in the background, and they all ate ice cream cones on their lunch break, and they all had big grins.
Well, that's, that's great, that's great.
The swans guy told me, same one that comes to our neighborhood, said, I love the work that Happy is doing on the roads. He said, it makes my job way more enjoyable, getting out there.
That's always good to hear things like that.
Yeah, absolutely, I think people notice and they really appreciate it.
I'm sure ones, for the person in front, right, and all of our wood, seriously, delivering stuff like that, yeah, there's no way that can be.
I'm surprised they haven't changed.
I mean, it's just.
I don't know.
You can't make money doing that. You don't see what the Mrs. Dr. Wee gives them every two weeks.
I was gonna say.
And it's an easy road out always. I think I'm subsidizing.
Their stuff is good, but it's.
You're subsidizing.
I think I'm subsidizing less.
A little pricey, yeah.
It is, but it's good stuff. Since my husband never goes to the grocery store, he didn't realize different characters, and that has it stopping from buying.
You know, the prices are everything, I, I need to go to the grocery store, like, to the shop, but dad will kill it, whatever, people. Put it on a table.
I know.
I give them.
Has it?
Of course they have.
Yeah.
I've noticed at the grocery store, like every week, the things I buy seem to increase a little bit, more of the packaging and stuff.
So, that's what I like.
You know, that's, uh.
Gosh, really, yeah, I couldn't, yeah.
Worst attacks for.
I don't know, I had some three bean salad, there's areas where they, this time I've been in one, but the one there was like seven beans. The long ones, I had about three of them, I was like, I don't know. Yes. In fact, I maybe got a little high, I can't figure one, you know, like that larger size. I mean, there's something you have to see.
I didn't know anybody actually ate three bean salad.
Oh, I know, that's right. And that's when I was cooking on my own, yeah, that three bean salad, so I was like, oh, uh, uh, all swan, that was my answer.
Now I know where to bring all the leftovers from our family. There's always three bean salad. Jerry, they are making good progress on the state part of drought. They're about, they're about ready to connect.
You know, I know they're getting a little bit more shorter, but it's in that, well, some areas are sort of now so short. That even when you're trying to get convection, unless you have a lot of ground on the outside, you can get convection, you know, it's just, I'm afraid that's gonna break way along that north side here, here.
I didn't realize that the level level C set up a whole price for that year. They're not buying that.
Oh, for them.
Yeah, he said he was gonna. I found out yesterday, all this block, it's a property, it's a, it's a, set up.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, for them.
They're angry. Also, that's the east side of the tree.
Are you talking about the south of town?
No, it's that one.
The worst spots is out there.
They, they box.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay, I know.
You know, where they call bricks.
Yeah, gotcha.
And east. Weather ground, all about that. But don't let pass the road, south of Garden Hill.
Oh, skill, uh. And you damage fuck if you fall a little, uh. You have yourself.
Should have walked back one of the very best parts, because normally they do. West State Farm.
Well, everything I saw apartment, they are, this one's the last thing. And it's pretty, it was funny, but I never.
Well, they've been taking it out on the trail.
It's in their days.
It's, uh, it was, uh, an all, no, uh, some of those. Pulled off the road, you see, after the trail, they're throwing. It was so bad, they're doing about twenty miles an hour.
I would warn you, you know, respondents to that. Thank you. I may send a note. Ben Goins. While I'm rest in back.
Yeah. Too exciting.
Have you ever accused of being an idiot?
No, I don't.
He is it. How's the show going, which one's coming?
Granted, I would say, I can't believe we're at the end of June already.
So, I got it.
When you found the show, you do get left over for the celebration? Just like the new picture I'm from, um, I'll tell you what I'm doing, I mean, inside of it, it's appropriate, but the two ladies that I have been conversing with about coming to the celebration or celebrations. Uh, I'm gonna take a little bit of that, every major sent through, and it may be as old, but I make four decisions, so I think I need to stay hold of the key, but I sure would like something after these, though, you guys are advertising. So, I.
Got a record, Jack.
So I snagged a box of the ice cream cups that they were giving away at the end, and I'm gonna take out a way to show them, to tell me. I figured they'd enjoy that, and I bought them each a coaster and each a coffee. And I thought, you know, if you have anything else, stay.
There might be some Chinese, I don't know, we got some Chinese yogurts left, but you didn't have any fish, so I don't know.
What is a Chinese yogurt?
I was looking for you to like this, and they're paper. Oh, my grandkids have it now, yeah.
Like a.
They don't belong in the.
Throw these out.
Yeah, and then they kind of spiral out. Yeah, I got after Rachel, because I thought she was hitting William with this, and it dawned on me that it was, it was retracting all the apparel. Do we have?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll stop down there. I know, there's cracky cracks in my house. Okay, maybe I'll grab a couple boxes, roll them in another bag.
Okay, so, uh, is that you that are? They got an old cover letter, so somebody's handing out the old cover letters.
They probably got. I don't know.
John made, where he sent out a note saying, I was gonna get authorized in the old sign sheet.
Where's the old versus the.
That's three lines and seven lines.
Sometimes we just have to pull up an old file.
Oh, I see, I see. Well, that's two, we have four lines. Yeah. This one has three.
I know he's there. I'm saying, okay. Yeah, 'cause that one's on the hill, and this one's over there, so it might be one of the employees, has it all done this, I don't know.
That's me.
Are we on computer or national now, or it's gonna start July?
Starts. Yeah, let's start.
We pretty much switched, because the twenty-third was actually our renewal, so we paid a portion of, uh.
Uh, in the, in the sign up for all the county boards, it's all closed, it's closed, we had a terrible job.
We forced everybody to do it.
Sometimes.
Was that a good process?
No, it sounds like you're, people really stepped up and.
Sarah.
Helped.
Certainly helping.
Yes, Sarah done a good job of helping. So I think the Highland counties are going to be, they go.
What work, what feedback?
What work, what did?
For me, I, I have used a similar system. I, I did mine very last year, and I'm very limited, so I didn't put it along, I was searching the site, but we can always bring up our selections from the previous cycle. And I couldn't find a place to be.
So, because this is new.
But it didn't even have your last year's, I thought maybe the data would entry all of our previous selections, no. But next year.
It was too rushed to be in, it was too rushed to be in.
So that one is four hundred words, huh?
It's rushed.
Four or five word words. Four, five.
Next year it should.
Five, four.
So if you make a guess, it puts five or four words.
Or they're not, Tammy, you may interest in it, if you go to the outpad or. So if you put a word in up here, it tells you all of them.
Oh, have they, they had canceled, they canceled it?
Oh, I didn't know that.
They were gonna reschedule it.
That's pretty deep.
So it didn't.
It's just too. Literally as it sounds.
Yeah, it was a promotional activity for the business year, and they were gonna have a, have a huddle launching. And I was just wondering how it would be, and she said they canceled.
It's, it's rescheduled.
Rescheduled, yeah, you have a date, Gary?
I wanna make sure I get them.
You can't have a date, no dates allowed.
I would think she'd be.
It's like using a slum shot.
Perfect, you know.
Uh, I think it's sometimes September, October.
Okay.
Because the avocado capital of the past or what? Lockemoney part of.
They're supposed to have a short amount of.
Uh, like two years ago. See how much you can get into the.
Yeah, the prices. Yeah, the price is definitely dropped. There for a while, we weren't eating buckmole. I think the price has gone back down. Just in time for it to go back down.
May fourth. That's, that's the thing.
May the fourth of Avocados be with you. I'm thinking.
Well, somebody expose themselves as a Star Wars person.
Sorry. My, my, may the fourth be with you. I have a grand son. Who's, who's all in, who's all in?
No, we have to, we have to get somebody to have a team, something, my, uh.
I'd go that way.
Their initial entrance, yeah, came from Indiana.
Oh, it really is a thing?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I didn't know that, I, I have no idea.
No, I'm joking.
Maybe we should have a team?
Do they take the.
We would have to.
Mom?
It has to be human power.
You know, those long rubber bands, we shoot water, it's scary, you go, you kill somebody.
I think they change from distance to accuracy, depending on how it's scored on accuracy.
What are you hitting the head or chest or what?
Targets, they will.
Play Sinatra, sounds like a film.
I had one here too, but yeah, I think Joe is the story.
Becky, did you have anything for us? She must have her celebration.
Half more people on the screen, are we gonna do this again?
Hundred and one.
We could do it like every twenty years.
Building in Brown, I'm gonna ask you guys to, uh, do some research on their restored building. People who want to contact, but then have.
Trey, Ruth.
I saved the flyer from a workshop.
To get some insight on what it would take to remove the cornerstone to retrieve the copper box that was placed behind it.
No, that would, yeah. No, that's a good one.
Well, they have people that have extensive, extensive knowledge of restoration of buildings. I'm more concerned with preserving, but, so.
I saved it, I saved. You're in a different conference.
Jerry, you're just, you're the wall, what's this?
He made one cover.
Jerry.
Right?
Jerry's on fire today.
He really is.
He really is.
He's more singer.
He is the worst.
I wanna know what conferences you're going to when I'm in the Negroes.
Anyway, I saved the flyer that she gave us that day, it has all the contact and all of it.
I just, I know that they will probably have info on experts, um, Mason. You know, they're what? I'm kidding, sorry, I wasn't there in Texas, she showed me what it is, the restoration of small warehouses in my land.
Oh, my God.
The state of Texas actually, what, fifty million a year to this fund. I wondered, maybe, that person would have a. What, um, asking you guys whether.
So, mid continent and restoration, that would be outside there, right?
No, they're, they're gonna get a local Mason, get a voice, mostly probably on the ground.
Yeah.
Like.
You're reading all that stuff in the U.S.
Am I on this, am I reading the subcommittee, subcommittee? Sure, I got, I, I wrote it in.
And, and the thought I have.
There's a company that get all the stone that's still running on the capital. We don't, because we've only got about a thousand pieces.
Yeah. But if we can retrieve that and do something.
Well, they basically.
The ones that run on the capital, when they face, then seal it, I hope. And place it inside, right next to where we're placing.
Making, but I, I don't even know where the workers are from, sorry.
You are.
Not.
Public order.
There'll be a plot.
Right, right. I think there was gonna be a plot. Did we ever find that article suggesting what had been filled in the, on the castle or whatever, no? I thought it was a matter.
Hold up, see.
Hundred-year-old stuff.
There's actually two of ours.
I bet, you know.
Actually, I don't. I did read it, but I can't remember. I did read it.
That doesn't help if you can't read it.
That's true. I'll fill her back this year. I'll find you.
And she perhaps, her sister sent me her ad hoc.
There are those guys, copper box, which was buried in the town. Anything else?
Did you forward that?
All right, nothing else, we'll adjourn at one forty-eight.